Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call it to order. The Council, I'm going to say that Councilor Butler will not be here and he'll be excused and help the Councilor Rutter will be here momentarily.
Okay, I'm gonna call, go ahead and call it to order.
And she will join us, but the council will now meet in closed session, discuss the denial of issuance of a business license as allowed by RCW 42.301401. The formal issuance of an order granting suspending, revoking or denying any license, permit or certificate to engage in any business occupation or profession.
The Council, I'm going to say that Councilor Butler will not be here and he'll be excused and help the Councilor Rutter will be here momentarily. And she will join us, but the council will now meet in closed session, discuss the denial of issuance of a business license as allowed by RCW 42.301401.
Or to any disciplinary proceedings involving a member of such business occupation or profession. Or to receive a license for a sports activity or to operate any mechanical device or motor vehicle where a license or registration is necessary.
The formal issuance of an order granting suspending, revoking or denying any license, permit or certificate to engage in any business occupation or profession. Or to any disciplinary proceedings involving a member of such business occupation or profession.
The council will be in closed session until 5:45 and the council is expected to take final action in the closed session.
Or to receive a license for a sports activity or to operate any mechanical device or motor vehicle where a license or registration is necessary.
So we will now enter closed session.
The council will be in closed session until 5:45 and the council is expected to take final action in the closed session. So we will now enter closed session.
Okay, this is an update that council is going to extend their closed session for an additional five minutes to be to end at 5:55.
Okay.
I go ahead and call this be the Squim City Council to order. Go ahead and stand for the Project Allegiance.
All right, go ahead and read the statement of coexistence and government to government relationship. The city that we know as Squim, So Chi Queen, was once inhabited solely by first peoples known as the Skalam, the New Skaliam people, represented by the three tribal governments, the Jamestown, Jamestown Skalam, Port Gambo Skalam, and Lower Elwak Skalam. Of these three sister tribes, the Jamestown Skalam tribe takes the lead in relationships with the city of Squim, while including the two sister tribes as determined by the tribes. We, the Squim City Council, and our partner, the Jamestown Skalam tribe, value coexisting respectfully and responsibly together for the purpose of stewarding the people, lands, and the institutions that serve us. Our governments do not work alone in isolation, but care for each other's communities. With enlightened awareness of the local history of this area, we commit to a continued partnership and collaboration as two sovereigns. This statement of coexistence and government to government relationship is a respect to the Skalam people and their history. And if City Clerk could please take your call.
Counselor Kathy Downer.
Here.
Counselor Dan Butler. Counselor Vicki Lowe.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Rachel Anderson.
Present.
Mayor Brandon Janice.
Present.
Counselor Harmony Rutter.
Here.
And Counselor Nicole Hartman.
Here.
And if there's a motion to excuse Counselor Butler?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moving seconded, any further discussion? Any opposed? All right, Counselor Butler is excused. All right, two ceremonial this evening. We're both final agenda, any changes?
I motion to approve.
Second.
Any opposed? All right, final agenda is approved. Right. First ceremonial item this evening is a proclamation in honor of Counselor Kathy Downer. This is honoring Kathy Downer for dedicated service on the Squim City Council. And whereas Counselor Kathy Downer began her service on the Squim City Council on November 26, 2019, bringing with her a vision for a stronger, more vibrant, and inclusive community. And whereas, over many years, Counselor Downer has worked tirelessly to represent the people of Squim with fairness, compassion, and a steadfast commitment to the principles of good governance. And whereas Counselor Downer has played a vital role in shaping transformative policies and projects, including affordable housing, spearheading economic development initiatives, improving public safety measures, expanding parks and recreational facilities and sidewalks, all which have contributed to the progress and prosperity of Squim. And whereas Counselor Downer has been instrumental in securing a Gold Star Memorial for the new Ruth McCord Park by working with city residents, local veteran organizations, and the city of Squim. And whereas Counselor Downer has served as a mentor and guide to new council members, sharing her wisdom, institutional knowledge, and dedication to public service, ensuring that the city council continues to operate with integrity and purpose. And whereas effective democratic representation requires differing perspectives, Counselor Downer added important and differing viewpoints to council discussions. And whereas Counselor Downer worked for the benefit of others without compensation equal to the number of hours contributed and was a public servant who went above and beyond by serving as a representative or liaison to various local and regional committees. And whereas Counselor Downer stepped down from public as Counselor Downer steps down from public office, she leaves behind an enduring legacy of progress, collaboration, and unwavering dedication to the well-being of all who call Squim home. And be it further resolved that Counselor Downer is wished joy, health, and success in all future endeavors, knowing that her contributions to the city of Squim will be remembered and appreciated for years to come. Now therefore, I, Brandon Janice, Mayor of the City of Squim and the Squim City Council, hereby express our gratitude to Counselor Kathy Downer for her contributions and service to the city of Squim. Signed on this 13th day of January 2025.
Mr. Mayor, I think I was on the Planning Commission for a year before I was on council. I think the dates, I was not on council in 19. But that's okay.
That'd be the clerk.
You.
I asked.
That's the term listed on my compass for you.
Yeah, I'll turn it over to you if you have any comments.
I really appreciate the reception that I'm getting tonight. But my husband picked out moving to Squim. I did not want to move here. Change is very difficult for me, but as soon as I got here, I loved it. There's really no reason to not live in Squim. It's the best. So thank you all for having, for making this a great city before I got here. I appreciate it. Thank you.
I've been able to work with Kathy most of the time I've been on council. But we actually are both liaisons for the Clalum Transit Board. And she is always raring to go to talk about her opinion and how she feels about things. And to be an elected official, I think, takes a lot of courage. There's a lot of moments where you have to be brave. And Kathy is a very big inspiration for me for that. So thank you so much for all your time on council. And I'll miss you.
Kathy, it has been a pleasure to serve with you. I will miss sitting next to you and conspiring. I know that we don't always agree on everything, but we mostly agree. And I've really enjoyed how you helped push things forward that are very important for the city. I have always lived here and never wanted to live anywhere else. So I appreciate what you've done for our city, especially the sidewalk stuff.
Kathy, thank you so much for being such a great mentor. It was wonderful to go through the campaign process with you in 2023. And yeah, I second what Rachel said about your courage and your spirit of leadership. It's been an honor working with you. Thank you very much.
All right, move on to our second proclamation. This one is in honor of Martin Luther King Day. And whereas on January 15, 1929, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was born in Atlanta, Georgia, when racial segregation was the law of the land. And whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. became a great civil rights leader who challenged us to make real the promise of America as the land of freedom, equality, opportunity, and brotherhood throughout, through peaceful protests and nonviolent acts. And whereas in August of 1963, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. led the March on Washington to draw attention to African Americans continuing challenges and inequalities a century after emancipation. And whereas during the march, 250,000 people gathered in front of the Lincoln Memorial in Washington, DC, also known as the March on Washington for Jobs and Freedom. This march was the occasion of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s "I Have a Dream" speech. The event aimed to advocate for the civil and economic rights of African Americans. And whereas although he supported nonviolent resistance and civil disobedience, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was often the victim of violence. Dr. King Jr. was assassinated on April 4, 1968, in Memphis, Tennessee. And whereas in 1983, Martin Luther King Jr. Day became a federal holiday commemorating Dr. King Jr.'s contribution to the Civil Rights Movement. And whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. dedicated his life to speaking out against injustice, inequality, poverty, and war, he said injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. And whereas Martin Luther King Jr. Day is the only federal holiday designated as a national day of service to encourage all Americans to volunteer to improve their communities. During the last quarter century, the Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service has grown and its impact has increased as more Americans embrace the idea that citizenship involves taking an active role in improving communities. Now therefore, I, Brandon Janice, Mayor of the City of Squim, and on behalf of the Squim City Council, do hereby proclaim Monday, January 20, 2025, Martin Luther King Jr. Day, a holiday, a day of service, and celebration of the civil rights leader's life and legacy. Signed on this 13th day of January 2025. And if anybody had any comments?
Just wanted to say that between sixth grade and the end of high school, I lived through three national assassinations. And that was, that was my childhood right there. First JFK, then Martin Luther King, and then RFK. And it was very, very unsettling as a kid. Because how do you explain that to somebody? You don't. You know, it was just horrific. And I hope that future generations never have to go through that, what we went through in the 60s. That's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you for reading the proclamation, Brandon. It's important every year to make sure that we observe and remind ourselves and stay steadfast in the work that Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. started. And just to acknowledge that here in Squim. Thank you very much.
All right, we'll move on to item seven, public comment. City Clerk. This is let me public forum. Individuals providing public comment must not disrupt or otherwise impede the orderly conduct of the meeting. This is not a forum for hate speech. The city of Squim supports the public's First Amendment right to free speech, but it does not support hate speech. Speakers are expected to be courteous and refrain from making hateful comments, sounds, or remarks. And any offensive words and conduct shared by the public do not reflect the city's values. The city of Squim stands firm in its commitment to being an inclusive community and rejects discrimination of any kind.
No one has signed up for remote public comments, so I will just read the instructions for in-person. Please take a moment to silence your cell phones. I will collect the public comment sign-in sheet shortly. If you wish to comment and have not signed up, please do so here over at the table. Each person will have three minutes to speak on any topic, and there will be a timer visible on the screen. A total of 30 minutes will be permitted for public comment. Please state your name if you are representing an organization and your city of residence. And our first public comment tonight is Judy Hatch.
It's on. I didn't write anything because I really only have one thing to say, and that is to Kathy. On behalf of all of us who have struggled through the overlay project for the last two years, we cannot thank you enough. We could always depend on you. And the thing was, you listened. You listened to us. You knew what was going on, and you knew how much it meant to us. And for that, we will be forever grateful. And we're really going to miss you. And we've enjoyed working with you. Whatever you do in the future, we certainly wish you every happiness and success. And if you ever need a letter of recommendation, you can call us. Yes. Good luck, Kathy.
All right, Doug Wright.
Doug Wright, Henderson Community in Squim. I was pointed to and threatened, so I better get up here and say something. What she said, Kathy, and to each and every one of you, because each and every one of you joined in and what she said, listened, learned, understood. And we appreciate you all. Thank you very much. Good luck.
It's a team. And that concludes public comment.
All right, move on to consent agenda.
The items on tonight's consent agenda: Claim vouchers totaling $2,694,528.46. City council meeting minutes from November 25, 2024, and December 9, 2024. Amendment one to the personal services contract with Bob Stowe. Connection to housing infrastructure program, the CHIP grant agreement. The Open Gov contract. The 2025 council meeting calendar. And newspaper of record.
A motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Seconded.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any further discussion? Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. All right, our only item under general business, counselor vacancy appointment process. City Clerk.
In council's agenda packet tonight is the proposed timeline and application to fill Counselor Downer's position. And for Counselor's consideration is to approve or amend the timeline and then discuss application questions.
So my only change would be to, instead of to shorten it, would just be to use the questions that we used when we filled Tom's seat. I think the questions are still relevant. That would shorten the process.
I agree. I'm supportive of that.
Does everybody know what those questions were? Or I can read them. I have them here. All right. What is your vision for this role? And how would you operationalize your vision? Are there any issue areas that you are particularly passionate about? How do you provide guidance, foster creativity? Welcome opposing viewpoints and open dialogue? What legislative advocacy experience will you bring to the Squim City Council? How would you leverage this experience to foster growth and relationship building with your legislators? Please spend a few minutes introducing yourselves to us. What are you interested in hearing? We are interested in hearing highlights of your experience relative to this position and why you are interested in being a Squim City Council member. Based on what you know this position, what skills or qualities do you believe are needed for someone to be successful in this role? Strong relationships are a key element of success. Can you give us an example of an experience that will demonstrate your ability to create, develop, and maintain successful partnerships and relationships? And what were the key components of your success? What issues are our city facing now? How do you ensure that your decisions align with our organizational goals and objectives? Can you provide an example of a decision that you made that directly contributed to achieving those goals? And do you have any questions for us? Those were the 10.
I think I would, it's hard for me to hold them all in my mind, all at the same time. My first comment would be the part, the one asking people to spend a few moments introducing themselves should be number one. Because it doesn't make sense to ask it later on, I don't think. Because in the course of, that's something I noticed in our last process is that that question wasn't number one. And then by the time people already got to that question, they'd already been telling us stories about themselves, and it kind of felt out of place. Then, and my last thought is 10 questions is a fine number of questions, but I would like to see them before making further comment. Thank you.
Any other comments on using the ones from last time or different ideas?
I just liked that idea. I had another comment about the process, but I can address that after everyone's addressed the questions.
Kathy? You okay with that, Nicole?
Yeah, I looked at the process and did a little reading on the municipal services website, and so I'm happy with it.
Okay, you go with using the questions from last, okay. So let us use the questions from last time. Yeah, there were questions from when we interviewed for Tom's seat when Nicole was chosen.
Oh, okay, okay. Yes, okay. I was like, it sounded like they were new questions.
No, 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 yeah.
Okay, no, yeah. My only comment would be the one asking people to spend a couple of minutes introducing themselves goes at the top of the list. That's my only comment, and I like those questions. Thank you.
So for clarification, council approves the list of questions from Tom's vacancy. All right.
And my question, just regarding the process there, for Monday, January 27, the council may choose to extend the deadline if any insufficient number of applications are received by the deadline. So I'm just curious to hear what council thinks is an insufficient number. Like, I think one to three sounds inefficient, and I would end up giving it an extra week. But like, if we got five, I'd be okay with five. So I'm just curious to hear what other people have to say.
I would say anything less than three, but just depends on how strong those applicants are.
I agree with you, Brandon. I think three would be a good minimum.
Happens if you don't get any.
Well, we got 90 days. So with the timeline be then, we'll potentially conduct interviews on the 27th, since we've already approved the questions.
That is correct.
All right. Everybody okay with that, that we potentially?
Let me post an announcement tomorrow.
That we potentially do interviews on the 27th and possibly select, unless we extend it.
Actually. Well, if we submit the application, the application will be posted tomorrow. Do you want applications due on the 24th?
Friday before the council meeting.
Mm-hmm. And then you need to pick which interviewees, or do you want me to send it out ahead of time? So they submit their applications by Friday, the 24th. And then on Monday, the 27th, you select who you would like to pick, unless there's more than three. So if there's only three, then you go ahead and schedule interviews on Monday, the 27th.
Yeah.
Okay.
Everybody okay with that? You okay with that, Vicki? Okay. All right, there is a motion.
I move to approve the application and selection process for filling the vacancy for city council position number seven with the adjusted timeline. Oh, position number one, yeah. Yeah. Seven, because that's what it says. Okay, amend that to, I move to approve the application and selection process for filling the vacancy for city council position number one with the adjusted timeline that we just discussed.
And I will second that.
All right, moving seconded. Any further discussion? Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. All right, youth liaisons.
Malia Nelson, for the purpose of the record, youth liaison. So we just came back from winter break from school. The Squim School District has an entirely new
The Squim School District has an entirely new website. So if you see any stories on there and they say they were posted on the 30th, it's likely they were written before then. But since the website was just redone, everything says it was posted on the 30th. NOLs Library has a teen night on the second Friday of every month from 6:00 to 7:30. So just grades seven through 10, and they have free food and snacks. And school is out next Monday for MLK Day, and the high school is doing an MLK Celebration Week for educating on what he did as a leader and his impact.
Hello. For purposes of the record, Leila Sandin, youth liaison. We have a couple of club scrimmages. We just had a mock trial club scrimmage in Port Townsend. It went pretty well. I think we won. And then this Thursday, we have a knowledgeable scrimmage in somewhere. You know where, Malia? Port Townsend, same place, knowledgeable scrimmage in Port Townsend. Sports, boys' basketball is undefeated, so that's pretty cool. And then we have a school dance this Saturday put on by the sophomore class, and it is a Winter Wonderland theme, so.
Thank you, city manager.
Thank you, council. You should have received my city manager report by email this afternoon. Before I get into, I just have a few I wanted to highlight, but I heard from Paul earlier today and included kind of an exciting, or at least kind of an important item from him under 7A. And I couldn't really summarize it all in a short report, so I asked him if he'd take two or three minutes tonight and just help you understand the background on this item. Paul is our, of course, public works director.
Thank you. Good evening. Happy to be here tonight to tell you, I think I've got some fairly good news to bring forward from my perspective. I always got to add that part. Back in 2019, the city applied for a grant from the Washington Emergency Management and received it about $318,000 to do in a preliminary design for a conveyance system and a stormwater infiltration system that starts up at Happy Valley, and then would go down Happy Valley Road to River Road, River Road onto the land, the DNR land that the county was in the process of acquiring. That work was put on hold until such time as the county actually acquired the DNR land. They did do that. We initiated the grant approval in 2021, then put it on hold, and then we re-initiated it last summer. During the course of being the new guy and taking a look at this, I started asking myself, why is the city lead on this? In part because the acreage that drains to the point where it'd be intercepted is all unincorporated county. The roadway for the conveyance system would go through county roadway, and the land that it would sit upon was county land. The county also has an interest because they're thinking that in the future, there may be an opportunity when their reservoir is constructed, that if there is additional water that they can pull out of the river during high-flow events, that water could be infiltrated through this infiltration system. That would help recharge the upper aquifer of those in that vicinity, potentially long enough even further down gradient. So I've been having some conversations with their, Joe Denisi and Steve Gray, to talk to them about they're taking the lead on this work where we have the grant, they would take the lead under an interlocal agreement. This morning, I participated in a group discussion with the county commissioners, who nodded and agreed that it made sense for the county to take a lead on that. So since that happened just this morning, I wanted to make sure I had an opportunity to come to tell you right up front that it looks like we're going to be working on an interlocal agreement where we would still be in the game. We would still be offering our expertise. But since all the work and the ultimate project was all gummy in the county, it makes more sense for them to take the lead on that. So you will be seeing an interlocal agreement come before you. Considering how the county may move forward on this, we want to bring it to both our legislative bodies at the same time. I would say not within a month, but probably within the next couple of months, we'd be bringing this forward with you for your consideration. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them before I move away from the mic. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. So, council, I'd just point you to a couple other emails that I've shared with you recently. Mostly, there's been a couple having to do with the legislative session that started today, of course, and kind of what some expectations and anticipations are relative to that. And then I also sent you one this afternoon about an emergency management training opportunity, and that's still in the works. But Marin has all the information on that, should you wish to do it. We're going pretty hard as a city with the fire district and with an expanded Squim operational area, which will include school, OMC, tribe, PED, et cetera, et cetera, to just make sure that we're all coordinated. So anyway, I know all of our staff is being FEMA-trained, et cetera, and some of you have expressed an interest in some of that, so it's available should you wish. Just a couple other things. I wanted to point you to the framed priority on your wall there. Barbara got that done for us, or you? Glad to be able to report that. Just a couple other things. Want to thank those of you that are able to attend Saturday's Employee Appreciation Event. So we look forward to that. A lot of work's been going into that to pull that off as well. And probably just last thing is, it's a little early, but we're getting, we have been looking for a safe way to use AI as a city and to make sure that the enterprise is not compromising, compromising that anything we do with AI does not become part of any public record or the internet. And so it's a little early. We're still working on kind of the agreement, but have had ongoing conversations with a vendor that looks really promising and with a lot of the cities that they're doing business with and had nothing but good results. So more to come on that, but I'm kind of excited about the opportunity. They will come in and train each department in how to optimize AI for the specific functionality of that department. So we'll come back to you on that. So other than that, I'm here to answer any other questions that you might have. There's, of course, a lot more in my manager report, in the email, but those were a couple of highlights I wanted to share. Thank you very much.
Committee reports.
Just wanted to get, this is Harmony. I just wanted to give an update on how things are going for WASELI, that be the Washington Collaborative Elected Leaders Institute. I'm still working to collaborate with Port Angeles City Councillor Drew Schwab. And in terms of crafting community outreach, I would like to explore. There was also some conversation happening with the DCD Department around that and plugging into upcoming sessions with the comp plan to engage citizens and make sure that everyone's bringing their input forward and being in a collaborative discussion. And I am planning to go to City Action Days next month in February. The organizers of WASELI have stated that if councillors who were participating in the program did attend City Action Days, we would be then there to interact with other councillors and invite them to participate in the next session. So I will be there, and I also will be memorizing promise, our legislative priorities, or have it on a little flashcard in my pocket so that I can make sure that I'm engaging with legislators and other councillors and building connection there and representing the city. That's what I have to report. Thank you very much.
Harmony, we can save you from having to memorize that. Megan, oh, she stepped out already, has done a really nice job with some handouts that we give to our legislatures. It's, you'll love the descriptions, the pictures and all that. So feel welcome to memorize it, but we've got some great handouts that will help you.
I appreciate that. I'll, what I'll probably distill is like, have it at the, just make sure I'm really able to articulate the bullet points. And then that's what I'm, that's what I meant.
Yeah, there's.
But yes, I look forward to good content and good conversation and also promoting the excellent experience I've had and then moving those discussions and that project forward. So thank you.
My favorite, my most favorite commission was the Transit Commission. It's a great group of people. And, but I will not be an elected official, so I cannot attend the meeting Wednesday. And Wednesday is when they elect their board president. It is Squim's turn to be the board president. So Rachel, if you could appoint somebody tonight so that Rachel doesn't feel alone at the meeting.
I did talk to Barb about that. So Barb is their admin for their CPS board. And I told her I was interested, if need be. The biggest issue for me is driving all the way out there. I don't feel comfortable chairing a meeting where I can't be there in person just because of like tech issues. If I ever have them, I would just feel horrible. So she also said too, that there's ways around that. It doesn't have to be Squim voted as the next chair. She also said that we only need one representative from each municipality to be there, so we don't have to have the two.
This Wednesday.
Correct. We just need.
Give up all that power by not having Squim in charge of the transit grants?
So I'm trying to figure out, we'll just have to wait and see on Wednesday if anybody else is interested, but I am.
I've never been to a meeting in person. I Zoomed them all, but when I go to their events, like the new buses, and when I rode up to Hurricane Ridge, the very first day, they kept asking me who I was. I said I'd look a lot different on Zoom, but I'm Kathy Dowder from Squim. And they would ask me again a couple of months later the next time I went to, you know, one of their events. But it's a good group of people. It is a lot of work. It's a two-hour meeting, and you have to do the prep work ahead of time, but.
Once a month.
Yeah, once a month. I found it very enjoyable if somebody wants to help Rachel out. Thank you.
Yeah, and I didn't know what everybody's schedules were like either, and so I didn't want people to feel pressured or, you know, obligated to be there if they can't make it. That's also an issue sometimes.
So the reports move on to open council discussion. And first one's Opportunity Fund Board of the opposition, city clerk.
I think the city manager might be.
Well, I'm happy to, I'm happy to talk about it, yeah. So as you know, I wish I had a little more background, but there's a percentage of the tax goes to the county or a state statute for what's called an opportunity fund. I think every county has one. Each county gets to decide how they administer that tax and how they set that up. Our county chose to create a board, and we can share kind of their statute or the local kind of ruling on that. There's Forks has a position, Squim has a position, Port Townsend has a position, the county has three positions, et cetera. And those funds that go to the county are transferred to the Opportunity Board, will make the decisions around the criteria that the state has set out. Anyway, we've had a resident that has filled that position for, I'm not even sure how many years, Sharon.
Delabar.
Delabar, thank you. And she just resigned, sent the mayor and I a letter in December that said that that would be the last of her kind of reign or tenure. And so we have an opportunity to put somebody else in there. When we pulled up the statute to see, they didn't even know that it said that there couldn't be a public official. So when I reached out to Colleen to say, really? She reached out to the county and they said, oh, we didn't know that it actually said that, and we're going to strike that. So it could be a county member, county, excuse me, a city council member, but it doesn't need to be. So we were just brainstorming on kind of who would be best to do that per the Opportunity Board requirements or job description, if you will. And actually, Heather's got this, we can share this with you if you want on your screen. It would be someone, because the Opportunity Fund Board is looking at applications for grants. This is money that goes into a pool. It usually is around infrastructure. It's also, they changed the criteria over the years, but always infrastructure. So Public Works gets a lot of that. We have applied twice. The first time we denied it, the second time was just this last year, and we had it approved last Friday for $555,000. So that was great. But every year, all of the municipalities out here submit applications for funding. Forks got 2.3 million for water sewer project, et cetera, et cetera. So it would help if it is a public official, if it's one of you all, then you wouldn't, you'd have to recuse yourself when Squim submits one. You wouldn't be able to vote for that. If it's a regular resident, they could, of course, vote for their own application. So anyway, I just wanted to let you know that there's an opportunity for a resident or someone that might be able to add value to Squim to represent us at the county level to have access to county funds for infrastructure and economic development.
I would say that I'd be more inclined to have a resident fill that position because it wouldn't make sense for one of us to be on there if we don't have any voting power.
Well, yeah.
Regarding Squim things.
Regarding Squim, yes. You'd be, as a board member, you evaluate every application that comes in. And so that's why it would be helpful to have a little bit of knowledge of infrastructure, be able to, you know, kind of evaluate the applications and ask good questions and whatnot, but.
So would it be beneficial if council chose the resident route if they had some kind of like public works background or infrastructure kind of background, so they know what they're looking at?
I think that would be helpful. I'm not sure Sharon did, but she was, she was very articulate. I don't know what her background is. I met with her a couple of times when I first got here. And she's a very astute and business person and thought very logically and evaluated and analyzed each application that was submitted. Was a good spokesman and for the city.
My next question would be, if council preferred to have a resident do that, is there a kind of application process where we choose who is on it? Or does the Fund Board choose?
I think we would pose that to the county, and then they would then probably accept that.
Okay.
Yeah, right now it's vacant. And now that we, so this is work in progress. I met with the EDC, which is, the county gave the money to the EDC, and they're the ones that created the Opportunity Fund. So it's a kind of arms-length from the county commissioners, but they still make the ultimate decisions per the recommendation of the Opportunity Fund Board members. But, so yeah, it's work in progress. We were, we had talked a little bit to Dan about would he be interested, but he didn't know anything about it. So I think that's, there's no commitment there. We haven't brainstormed as a staff, but we could. Other people that might know the Squim area well and what the city's trying to do, we could bring some recommendations back, should you wish, or you could make some yourself. But we thought we had to move faster than this. When I talked to Colleen and Lori on Friday, they have an open application process. I said, so, you know, they'll take them year-round, and they meet as the applications come in. And it is kind of a first-come, first-served thing. So I think, I think they're going to change the process because otherwise, everybody's running to submit something the first of the year and whatnot. They award them very, they award this grant money in a convenient way. I think it serves as a way for the county to take care of county infrastructure costs and projects that they would love not to come out of their general fund. So it is a nice additional fund for them to help out underserved communities and parts of the county. So anyway, but we've, we will probably become more. additional fund for them to help out underserved communities and parts of the county. So anyway, but we've, we've, we will probably become more engaged in submitting applications going forward. Cause you know, if you don't ask, you're just not going to participate. Anyway, Mayor, that's all. I just wanted to kind of give an overview of that. I am certainly willing to answer any questions.
Okay. I thought I might have that if it's, if we were looking for someone that might have a little bit of background in the public works arena, maybe ask those that are in the city on the
planning commission.
Yeah, the planning commissioner, they might be interested. As a thought.
Well, we're certainly welcome to brainstorm as a senior management or as a, as a staff and try to bring some ideas back to you. And you can add those to whatever else you're thinking and, but I think it's your decision.
I would just run it by them, see if there's somebody on there that.
Okay.
Reach out to the city ones and say, hey, if you're interested.
Right. If you need council consensus, I support reaching out to planning commission.
Okay. Okay. Great. That's.
I guess three. Is there another one? Get that?
Great. Thank you. I'll definitely bring that up. Thank you.
Anything else on this topic? All right. Moving on to 12B skate park name change. Does everybody have a chance to read what I had sent out? So this is my topic. And this is the rationale that's set, sent, set out under our 2023-17 for adopting guidelines. So I could go through and read this, this entire, the rationale, but I do want to read just a couple of things for the record. On the reasoning on why this individual Mark deserves to have the skate park named after him for his dedication to the youth, the community that went just, you know, above and beyond what he did for the skate park. So there's just a couple of little things here than the rationale. Like I said, I wanted to read for these, the public record here. So, you know, Mark Simpson was a tireless advocate for the often underrepresented skateboard community in Squim. Getting in 2016, he launched fundraising efforts and sought, sought support from local businesses and organizations to renovate the skate park in Cary Blake Park, ensuring it would serve future generations of skaters. His dedication stemmed from a genuine love for the kids that used the skate park and a desire to provide them with a safe, welcoming space to enjoy their passion. As a role model in the community, Mark consistently prioritized family, safety, fun and responsibility for the park's upkeep. He frequently organized volunteer efforts to clean the park and stepped in to mediate situations, always seeking peaceful resolutions. His positive influence and leadership have made him a beloved figure within the broader board sports community, spanning skateboarding, surfing and snowboarding. He founded a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, Squim Youth Skate Park, creating opportunities for tax deductible donations to support the park's future. And Mark's enduring passion and selfless contributions left a lasting impact on the Squim's community, inspiring countless young people and strengthening the bonds within boarding sports culture. Mark's efforts to renovate and maintain the skate park have directly enhanced the quality of life for Squim's youth, providing them with a safe and inclusive environment to gather, express themselves and develop their skills. And Mark's commitment went be, to the skate park went beyond physical improvements. He fostered a sense of responsibility and community pride among local skaters. By organizing these cleanup events, mediating conflicts and promoting safety and respect, he helped create a positive culture within the park that continues to benefit Squim's family and youth. And naming the skate park after Mark would not only honor his legacy, but serve as an enduring reminder of the values he stood for. Community service, compassion and inclusive, inclusivity. It would celebrate his contributions while inspiring future generations to give back and care for the spaces that they enjoy. And it would, the name change aligns with the broader community goals of recognizing individuals who have made significant lasting impacts on public spaces and youth development. So again, I hope that the council would go ahead and authorize staff to begin the 30 calendar day open public comment period on this. There is authorization from his wife. I think she might be here if she wishes to give any comment. She's more than welcome to come up. If she would like to.
Hi. And first I want to say thank you for being here because I realize you guys give up a lot of time and effort in serving us. So I appreciate that you're meeting several times a month and all the time in the background. Everything you said is super beautiful. It's gonna make me hard. It's hard to speak that, but I do believe with my whole heart that Mark really did love the community. And he is a really great guy who is a good role model. And so yes, I, I agree. And I a hundred percent support. And I would hope, you know, I think his name would be good to put out there. If there needs to be a name on this skate park, then that'd be fantastic. And then I do want to, can I read something? Gary, his best friend Gary was supposed to be here, but woke up with a fever and all that. And so he's like, there's no way I can show up. But he sent me a text. Is that, all right, okay. Mark was my best friend for so many reasons, but what I would want you to know about him is how good a person he was and how he loved the skating community. He cared immensely about the kids that are in the skate community and he worked tirelessly to coach them and teach them how to skate, but also advocated for wearing helmets and being safe as well. Mark loved people and he often told me how much he wanted to improve the skate park so that it would be a safe place for young people in Squim to be outdoors and have community with each other. He even started a nonprofit to raise funds toward improving the skate park. I cannot think of a person more deserving to name the park after than Mark. I wish I could have been here tonight to tell you how much he meant to so many people, but unfortunately was not able to attend. I know he will be looking down on the legacy of his efforts in the skate park with a big smile on his face. Thank you for thinking of him in this way. It means a lot to his family and his friends. So, thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. So going back to like his 501 and his commitment to the skate park. And why he don't, he didn't have the same, you know, deep pockets as the, like the band or pickleball. They did try to, and this is one of the things that they did come up with was a conceptual design of what hopefully a new skate park at Cary Blake Park would have been. So this is what they did. Hopefully they came up with.
And this would cover the same space that it is now in the park?
Well, I'm not sure if it will now with the pickleball courts there.
Okay.
That's just what they came.
From the old BMX park. Okay. So it would be half of it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I always see kids using that and adults too. Adults teaching little kids how to bike ride or how to use skateboards or roller skating. It's great.
Yeah. Except, you know, that just shows the dedication. Like I said, well, not having the, the deep pockets, like pickleballers or the Squim C-Band, you know, working with what he had to, you know, help out any way he could. So hopefully his vision of a new skate park is in the future plans at Cary Blake, or maybe at the new park. So.
A couple of questions. One regarding the 501(c)(3), is somebody else taking that over?
That I wouldn't know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Second question. Um, I heard you say we need a 30 day public comment period. Do we need a public hearing? Or is it just council? After hearing different public comments or written in comments, does council?
It just says if the suggested name complies with this guideline, the city will provide an open public comment period of 30 calendar days. That is advertised broadly, including notification to all members of the city's boards and commissions. And the suggested name may be placed on the agenda of a regular meeting of the city council. So I don't know if that is a public hearing or what that means. So I would look to maybe the city attorney.
Thanks, Brandon. Purposes of the record, Christina Nelson Gross, city attorney. I would not interpret that language to mean that a public hearing is necessary. I would interpret that to mean that council hold a public comment period, not unlike perhaps a town hall or other discussion forum in which to hear from everyone who wished to speak on the matter. So something like a, like a public hearing light, I guess, without the formality and those types of things. Council would certainly have the option, right? If it was confronted with perhaps hundreds of people looking to speak, council could obviously adopt some type of time limits, but not necessarily necessary given, you know, the, the nature of this. The, the nature of this is intended to be, you know, for the community to come in and support or not support the proposed name. And so it's intended for council to receive that information to be able to process it and then make a decision accordingly. So I would, I would submit to council that, you know, council should be looking at how they wanted to hold this, this conversation. And if it became too lengthy, that council continue that and to perhaps a subsequent date or a subsequent meeting. And or until councils feels that they have the, all the information that they need to base their decision, if that makes sense. So answer the question, Mayor.
Any other questions from council? If not, I'll make a motion.
Forgive me. I did not know Mark Simpson, but can you explain to me the naming convention?
The, the name of the Marky Mark. So I was speaking with Mark's wife and his friend, and they're the ones that came up with that name.
Then that's approved spelling by you. Okay.
And so I'll make a motion that we direct staff to schedule the appropriate hearing for the Squim Skate Park name change, the Marky Mark Simpson Skate Park. And for 30 days.
And I will second that.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Any opposed? That motion passes. All right, 12C, school district levy discussion.
I was raising my hand just to ask a quick follow up on the, the picture of the, the skate park. Is that digital? Will, will that be made digital and then available for folks to see? Is that part of the comment period, as it were? Or that was just, that's just a, I'm sorry, how about? We've already moved on to 12C. I'm sorry.
Is that digitalized? Do you know? Okay. She said she'll call and see if she can get us more. All right. Okay. 12C. Who is tackling this one?
I think this, well, we, I think we received an email from councillor Butler, who couldn't be here tonight, that asked that we talk about the possibility of suspending council rule 3.9 and being able to, which is our own rule and not a state law, right? That, and that we can show support of the school on levy.
So there are some state laws, RCW 42 dot 17A dot 555. The Okay. How do I give context? So for context, we would have to suspend council rules to, if I'm understanding it correctly, we would have to suspend council rules in order to have an agenda item about any ballot measure. So that's like a separate item. And so this item is talking about doing that is talking about suspending council rules. I'm really hoping that made sense. Suspending council rules versus actually having an agenda item. I don't know if that's making sense. I'm still pretty confused on all of the RCW stuff. And so I reached out to the PDC. I didn't have an opportunity to call them, but I did send an email and I'm waiting to hear back just because I really want to do everything I can to protect council and the city and not actively violate any RCWs.
Can you repeat the number?
So RCW 42 dot 17A dot 555.
No number after that.
Sorry? No, that is its own RCW signage, 42 dot 17A dot 555. So I did reach out to the PDC because I had a lot of questions and I really wanted clarification and confirmation from them before I even discussed anything else.
Rachel, if I may, again, purposes of the record, Christina Nelson Gross, the RCW 4217A 555 in a nutshell, just talks about a myriad of things in which elected officials and city facilities cannot be used to promote or to oppose a specific ballot measure or candidate. The, the question that I think Rachel is, is wrestling with is that there is also this provision in those guidelines that talks about if councils or jurisdictions engage in such practices, part of their quote, "normal course and conduct", then there is some restrictions in which that could be accomplished. One of the things that I discussed with Rachel and why I encouraged her to reach out to the PDC is because from my perspective, given the fact that council is prohibited from doing so within its council rules, I think that makes it a very difficult argument to say that that is part of your normal course and conduct. So I think that is what Rachel is trying to bring to council's attention tonight, not necessarily the merits of doing a letter of support or not. She's talking about the technical challenges associated with potentially running afoul of the PDC for not having such things as part of a normal course of conduct, if that makes sense. Is that right, Rachel? Am I getting that right?
Yes.
Okay.
I apologize. I couldn't articulate it as well.
So then I think in light of that, we should hear back from the PDC. But when is the? February, yeah.
I'm hoping they can get back to me by the end of the week. In which case I could forward their response to Heather and Heather could forward it to council as information only. And then I don't know, because we would have to write, discuss the responses as a unit, as a council, in order to know what next steps we are able to take.
What was your question to PDC one more time? Your questions?
My questions to the PDC?
Yeah.
Let me stand by.
While she's looking that up, I do think that Counsel Butler does make a, a good argument, though, on his outside organization on not considering the school district as such. That I think that might be something when we look at council rules in the future is maybe making that more clear. Because I think, you know, he mentioned, I can't remember if he did it in his with the letter or whatnot. You know, someone from Seattle doing a ballot, you know, propositions or resolutions for this whole state compared to the school district. I think there's two different distinctions on outside organizations. But that's, like I said, might be a topic for a different day when we're looking at
Right.
council rules. I think he makes a good point on that.
Right. And my interpretation of outside agency is anyone that, like if the city of Squim works on the city of Squim's budget, if we don't work on their budget as an agency, then they're an outside agency.
I mean, personally, I don't, I don't consider the school as an outside agency, but.
This came up when the hospital came to us because I wanted to support the hospital. What hospital levies and school levies very much affect a city, especially a small city like us. So it's unfortunate that we
And we also, because of the RCWs, we have to be really careful with the verbiage that we use. So that's why it makes it so hard to even discuss what we want to discuss without having more information. So I found, I found the questions, if you guys are ready. There were, there were a few, so more than a few. Okay. Cause I was trying to get lots of information and lots of confirmation and trying to make sure I had all the information I could have in one email. And I did let them know there could be follow up questions depending on their responses. Okay. So question number one, it's my understanding that we would be able to have a letter of support as an agenda item, as long as both viewpoints are given opportunity to state their reasoning. Is my understanding correct? And does amending our council rules to allow junior taxing districts to request a resolution or letter of support for a ballot measure comply with this RCW? And this is also with the question of, I don't know how the state treats resolutions versus letter of supports. And so if it's just a letter of support, it might be totally different. I don't know.
Counselor, if I may, I suspect that for purposes of that statute, they were probably not going to make a distinction.
Okay.
Because it, because the issue is whether or not you are using city facilities for support or against a ballot measure, not the form in which it takes.
Okay.
The RCW actually says, "Vote upon a motion proposal, resolution, order, ordinance, or to support or oppose a ballot proposition." So I think that covers any of those possibilities.
Do you want me to continue? My questions? It's
Yeah, how many, yeah.
There were more. Okay, junior taxing districts. If so, what safeguards would need to be in place to ensure compliance with state law? Can council members express personal support or opposition unto ballot measures during a public meeting? Which I believe would be no, it would have to be off of the dais, out of the building, not using city facilities or resources. Is there any language elected officials should avoid to ensure compliance with state law? Is there any other way to clearly distinguish between the city's position and a council member's personal opinion to avoid legal issues? Am I correct in understanding that an elected official voicing support or opposition for a political campaign, including a ballot measure at a council meeting is a violation because they are using public government facilities and resources to do so? In the event that council suspends their own rules in order to hear both sides of these ballot measures, what are potential consequences if council does not hear both sides, like the support and opposition? So basically what are our consequences if we don't, you know, if we violate the RCW? And then the, our letter of support and resolution treated completely differently, which Christina just answered that one. So all of these were for clarification. I really want to see a yes or no. Any exceptions, you know, hearing straight from the PDC just makes me much more comfortable moving forward.
Are we individually liable for PDC violations under this, or is it just the city itself?
As I recall, it's both.
Do you want me to read the whole RCW?
If you'd like to.
The part that we're talking about is, you know, okay, no elected official or employee of his, her office, or person appointed or employee, da, 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 da. Can use the office or campaign election of any person or the promotion of or opposition to any ballot proposition, facilities of, of a public office or agency included, but are not limited to use of stationary postage machines, equipment, use of employees, a long list of stuff. However, this does not apply to the following activity, and this is what we're questioning. Action taken at an open public meeting by members of an elected legislative body or by an elected board, council, or commission of a special purpose district, including but not limited to fire district, public hospital district, library districts, park, park districts, port districts, public utilities, school districts, sewer districts, and water districts. So that's the list. To express a collective decision or to actually vote upon a motion, proposal, resolution, order, or ordinance, or to support or oppose a ballot proposition, so long as A, any required notice of meeting includes a title and number of the ballot proposition, and B, the members of the legislative body, members of the board, council, and commission of the special proposed district or member of the public are afforded an opportunity, approximate equal opportunity for the expression of opposing views. There are three other activities. A statement by an elected official in support of or in opposition to and ballot opposition at an open press conference, so not happening within these four walls, using a public facility. Activities which are part of the normal and regular conduct of the officer, the agency. I think that's what you were referring to, but that is a separate activity. And this section does not apply to any person who is a state officer or a state employee.
And again, thank you for that, Vicky. And I think Heather has pulled that up for the audience to see as well. So to summarize, there are two issues at play. One, whether or not this is a normal course in conduct, which, right, with the council rules, that is an added difficulty. The difficulty with number one is the timeframe in which the school district gave us the information. And I would have some concern on whether or not, for example, I believe we received this information on Tuesday and whether or not it's reasonable and feasible to say that any opposition to this would be able to organize and be able to come and speak to the city council in, to demonstrate an opposition. That doesn't mean that there is one, but those are the types of totality of the circumstances that the PDC looks for. So that's, that's the concerns. That's why I suggested that Rachel reach out to the PDC because they are the ones with the definitive authority on this. If we had received this information from the school district, say in November, then that is a much easier thing to say, right? We could have put it on the meeting for this in January. We could have been widely publicizing that. So anyone who did want to come in and speak against it, we would have been able to have that time. I feel confident that we could have met option one. But, but unfortunately, that's not the circumstances in which we find ourselves.
And I'll just
I think we're giving equal opportunity to both opposing and both views because it's the same timeline. Right? If we say we're going to discuss this, the people who either are against it or for it have the same amount of time to to show up to a meeting and, and give their thoughts.
I agree that's the knee jerk reaction, but I don't know that I would agree that, and more importantly, I don't know that the PDC would agree that that's a reasonable opportunity. Right? If everyone has been talking about this and, you know, I think it's also reasonable because we see this in countless elections. People aren't necessarily going out and actively opposing a ballot measure or a particular candidate. A lot of times they don't look at it until there is something that prompts them to dig into it further. And so if the vast majority of people or people who are opposed to this, they're not even really thinking about it in this point until they get their ballot and they're looking at it. I don't know that we could say that they would have a reasonable opportunity to gather. Meanwhile, the, and regardless of whether it's
It's an approximate equal opportunity.
And the approximate equal opportunity is that the, that the campaign machine, whatever entity it is, has been moving this forward for some time. And now all of a sudden, we get the information on Tuesday to put it on the following Monday council meeting. I, I think that, I, I think the PDC would not necessarily look at that kindly, which again, is why we've asked for some clarification on how they would view that.
And I don't know if it matters, but I might just add the clarification. I'm just looking this up in our paper. The ballots go out on January 22nd for a February 11th special election. So we're talking January 22nd for a February 11th election.
So we'll see what the PDC says and then you'll send it to Heather and then we can make a decide if we need a special meeting or what we were going to do.
That's a good question because we can't decide as a unit in a public setting.
We have to actually hold a meeting.
A special meeting. So as clerk, do you know the best? Would it just be like the mayor? Are you available this day for?
Depending on when you, when you get your information. It has to be a majority that decides to hold a special meeting.
Sorry, Heather, I thought the mayor was able to call one. Yeah.
And Counselor Butler suggested January 21st at 5:00 PM.
I also had a question about, I guess, like what is ample time? Is it like a public, that's another thing I should have asked. Is it like a public hearing where it has to be like 10 days ahead of time? Or is it? 24 hours?
Approximate equal opportunity. So. When are the ballots coming out again? I'm sorry.
22nd.
Of this month? Ooh. Okay. So can we just make a plan? We get the response from PDC. Maybe it's no, and we don't do anything. But if it's yes, it's feasible, then we move it forward. Yeah. And the steps would be goes to Heather, Brandon can decide a special meeting and then go from there.
But there's only, so when is the cutoff? Because we would have to receive, if, help me under, make sure I'm, I'm following you all correctly, that we would have to receive a response from the PDC by tomorrow, by Thursday, in order to in order to have enough time. Don't we have to notice in advance and, and all that? I'm sorry.
24 hours notice for a special meeting.
And, and council can set that now if they so choose, right? Because you're having that discussion now. If you choose to have your special meeting on January 21st, or whatever the day was at 5:00 PM, council can absolutely do that now because we only require 24 hours advance notice for that. And if the, if the information from the PDC comes back on the Friday before and the answer is an unequivocal no, that will be sent out to you and will cancel that special meeting. It's certainly a lot easier to set one and cancel it now than to try to scramble at the last minute now and hope that we've got the PDC response in time to set a special meeting and then, and then round up council.
That the route we want to take? Or do we want to wait and then decide after results come back?
I move that we schedule a meeting, January 21st, 6:00 PM? I don't know when everyone's available, 6:00 PM? Just so it's on the calendar and we can cancel it if need be.
I second that.
Moved and seconded. Anything further?
What'd I say, 6:00 PM? Making a mental note. Okay.
I will be virtual.
I will likely be virtual if it's happening. Yeah, I just, I feel like, um, I, I just feel like the, um, yeah, well, we'll have to see what the PDC says. The way I'm interpreting right now is this doesn't feel like a good idea. Or I'm, the, the way it's being interpreted, I'm not entirely sure. But, um, yeah, we'll just see. If it is happening, I, I will be virtual and I, I'm not sure right now.
And counsel, I am so sorry to, I know you're getting ready to vote on this, but the city manager did pull up the council chambers calendar and council.
What time is that supposed to start?
Okay, so the 21st is a Tuesday and the planning commission is going to be in there. So council may want to entertain a different time. It looks like they normally start at 5:00 or 5:30. So I don't know what council's appetite is for starting earlier in the day. Sorry.
I'm good with five.
When do they start? 5:00 or 5:30?
Oh. City Manager Matt said it looks like they start at 5:30. And so I think it would be, you know, if you started at 4:45, that might, 45 minutes would give you enough time. It's really up to council at this point. We just wanted to alert you of a room conflict.
Yes, I do appreciate that. I'd be inclined for four just in case, but I also don't know if everybody would be available.
I have a question though for the meeting. I know in the past we've set, can we set limits on speakers? Like 10, 10 speakers pro con? Tell whether these have a little bit of, know what timing we're dealing with?
I, I believe so. Hopefully that'll be part of the information that Rachel receives from, from the PDC. I think from the, from their perspective, I think that as long as, again, as, as Vicky had mentioned, as long as there's equal opportunity. I think the crux, though, at this juncture is because this is a last minute agenda item that looking at the totality of the circumstances, that may not look like enough time for people to get organized. But I think in terms of the actual public discussion, I, I suspect that's fine.
And I didn't ask the PD, I can, I can reach out to ask about how like if we can limit speakers and have it be an equal number of people.
I, you certainly can if you remember, but at this point, because I'm very comfortable saying that limiting speakers is part of our normal course in conduct, I'm very comfortable with that, so.
And we had, am I understanding that there would have to be an equal number of people speaking for and people speaking against? Or there's just an opportunity to do so?
There is an opportunity to do so. There, so this conversation is not intended to be telegraphing to anyone out there who may be opposed to the school district's desire to move their levy forward. That's not what this conversation is about. So in terms of the slots available, talking about the public hearing, if you've got 25 people slated for, yes, we want this to happen, and an equal number of 25 slots, but only one person signs up, you've provided the opportunity. What I want the council to be able to say is, we didn't just slam this through at the next available council meeting. We were thoughtful, we got the newspapers involved, we were, you know, spreading this out widely and casting a wide net that we're going to be having this public conversation. And we want people to come and speak and give their voice on that. That's the purpose of this.
Okay.
So does that, did that answer your question?
That does answer my question. And yeah, a week is pretty short, but yeah, I, it's important, it's, the, let me see, what am I trying to say now? The, I'm gonna, I'm gonna gather my thoughts, I will be right back.
Can I amend my motion to start at 4:00 instead of 6:00? Does that work for a majority?
I amend my second.
amended motion that seconded, still in discussion.
So this would be us just having, we would, so this special session would be us hosting a public discussion about this. And that would be, that would be the whole purpose of it. We're not moving towards a letter or any statement as a council for or against? This is just hosting a discussion, that's.
No, no.
No, okay.
The goal is to have a resolution or a letter of support or something in the end, but providing equal opportunity to both sides to tell us how they feel about that.
Do we need to decide which one it's going to be, though? A letter of support or proclamation?
I would prefer a letter of support.
Yeah, Heather knows this better than I do, but I think I was copied on a couple of emails that county commissioners did a resolution or it was proposed to them that they would and maybe a draft was given them, I don't know. But I think the offer was, could it be a letter of support? And they said, sure, whatever. Is that right, Heather? I think they were comfortable with either one.
They are correct, that is correct. I talked to Tracy Norman, she's executive assistant to superintendent. And she noted that the resolution that they provided to us was, basically, they copied what was provided to county because that's what county requested. And our proposal was that a letter of support would be more, would be the best route to go for this. Yeah.
For our process.
Yes.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
I'm not available at 4 o'clock on Tuesday.
There's still a quorum. On the Dan's still available.
That's a good question.
Risk it without knowing Dan's schedule?
I was gonna say, I don't suppose we could ask planning commission to move? But no, there has to be a public meeting too. Sorry, I didn't put my speaker on. So Nicole asked if Wednesday is too late and it feels like it is? But I don't know for sure.
Why don't we do, why don't we risk it on that Monday at 4:00? And if Dan's unavailable, I can call it for.
You mean Tuesday?
Tuesday, yeah. I can call us, I can get ahold of Dan. And if he's not, I can call it for that Wednesday or whatever it is at the same time.
And I don't want to complicate things. This is just on my calendar as a meeting invite because I asked them to put all those meetings on my calendar. But often they cancel them if they don't have enough agenda items. So I'm not sure what this upcoming agenda looks like for planning commission. So I'll just throw that out to make things more confusing.
I hope they're working on the comprehensive plan.
If you go to Wednesday and the session started at 6:00, that would be doable for me because then I could attend after I complete my work on that day.
I'm comfortable with amending it again to the 22nd at 6:00. Because then if everybody else could go, that to me feels more like we have more people here that can discuss it confirmed. So I'm amending mine too. Wednesday, the 22nd at 6:00, again, again, amending.
I'll second the amended motion.
Think further on the amended motion? And the opposed? All right, that motion passes. Counselor Downer.
May I say something before open discussion ends? Because I forgot to say something earlier.
I had something else for it, so.
Oh, go ahead.
No, you go.
Okay.
You go.
Two things. My fellow counselors.
Counselor Downer.
I'm sorry, what?
The chair does not recognize Counselor Downer.
In about a half hour, you won't recognize. Okay, our F1 forms at the, this is what reminded me, the PDC, our F1 forms are due very soon, all of us sitting here. And I forgot to mention the fact that when I'm, even though I won't be around, please see, complete the Gold Star Memorial slash Veterans Memorial at the new park. It means a lot to me, thanks. That's it. Do you recognize me now?
All right, anybody like to attend the next planning? Oh, Goinger.
Oh, sorry. So I had one more thing for open council discussion and Harmony. I apologize for bringing this up now. I meant to email you and it just, time got away from me today. But the AWC has a scholarship opportunity for seniors. And Malia, we reached out to you to see if you were interested in that. And we didn't feel comfortable nominating you without your consent, one. And two, without council consensus. And so I'm so sorry to spring this on you, but the deadline is the 27th. And so it felt like talking about it at the 27th meeting was way too short, short of the timeline.
Hello? No, yeah. Malia Nelson, youth eyes and for the purpose of the record, I feel totally comfortable with that nomination. I was just a little bit confused. Was it, is it different than the small government's application you sent me a while back? Or is that the same one?
I believe it's different. Different, okay. Okay, can confirm, different.
Yeah, in that case, I'm really interested in that and thank you for.
All right. Do we have council consensus to nominate Malia for the AWC scholarship? Yes, I'm hearing yeses.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you so much.
I'm also attending the AWC pledge days. Is that what you're talking about?
So this was just talking about nominating her for a scholarship to the AWC? And you were going to the legislative days? Or what'd you say? Yes. Or city action?
City action days, yes.
Okay, yeah, and Harmony's going.
Okay. And one guy from PA.
Excellent. I hope you guys have a great time and learn a lot.
Did I just add an extra comment about the AWC scholarship? Just for, yeah, okay. So this is the Association of Washington Cities Center for Quality Community Scholarship, which supports high school seniors who are active in leadership in their city, government, community, or school, and plan to pursue post-secondary education. Up to three, each year, all of Washington's 281 cities and towns can recruit scholarship applicants. Each jurisdiction can nominate one graduating high school senior. This is a great way to recognize the youth in your community who have made a positive contribution to your city. And statewide, $3,000 scholarships are being offered in 2025. So good luck, Malia, and we hope you are successful. Thank you.
And we will fill you in on next steps also, Malia, just because I got to remember, like, do we nominate you first and then send you info? So we'll figure all that out and then let you know. Okay.
All right, next planning meeting, if anybody would like to attend.
I don't have to. I go because I like to. When is it, the 21st at 2:00?
Yep.
Okay, confirmed.
Reach out to Dan, see if he would like to, otherwise. If anybody wants to, just reach out to Heather and let her know. All right. Next council meeting will potentially be, what is it, the 20?
Monday, December 27th. The special meeting?
Yeah.
Will be January 22nd. Regular session will be.
27th.
The 27th. And there will be a work session that day as well.
All right, Counselor Downer, you want to do us the honor?
I move we adjourn for the very last time. I didn't hear a second.
I second.
Okay.
All right, have a good night.